All right, so we'll start the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, January twenty-third. This meeting is being recorded. Is anyone else recording the meeting? All right, so we'll go ahead and we'll do roll call, Jack King,
You're
Jonathan Hinkin, Malcolm Thicke,
Here.
Pedro Patrano,
Hi.
Brandy Nelson, and Jeremy Ega is not here yet. All right, do we have any formates?
No.
We have no formates. We'll move on to the minutes of January ninth. Do we have a motion to approve it as amended?
So.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Second.
Move a second by Malcolm. Do we have any discussion on the minute? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, when you oppose? And thank you, Jeremy, for joining us. Fifty-two seconds.
Same here, Jeremy.
Yeah, you're within the window, the grace period. Okay. Item number four, Town Planner's Report. I understand you've got some things to share with.
Right, tonight, item four A is to discuss the the town's initiative to complete the Americans with Disabilities Act self-evaluation and transition plan. And here to help guide us through that is Andy McKeever, staff from Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. And he's got some slides which I'll put on the screen and he can walk us through the process, what it is and how will, how will accomplish it, right?
Exactly.
Hi, Andy, thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Good to meet you all. You have some slides to pretty walk through just sort of what the ADA transition plan is and or what it will entail over the next few months. I know this board is pretty aware of the RPC, but just, you know, for anyone who's not or anybody in the public, we are a quasi-public agency that serves all of Berkshire County, thirty-two cities and towns. So this is, this is what we do. We are a regionalized planning agency. We specialize in long-term planning for all municipalities. We work in land use, transportation, community, community planning, economic development. We have our public health side. We do a housing, housing we have that can do a lot of environmental planning. But this is our mission statement here. You know, we provide leadership and assistance to the counties, municipalities, organizations, and citizens in achieving countywide interrelationships, prosperity, opportunities, quality of life, strength, and vibrancy. So how we operate is we are overseen by a full commission, which consists of representatives from every one of our communities in Berkshire County. Each community assigns a delegate and a, an alternate delegate. We also have subcommittees, an executive committee, Commission Development Committee, Environmental Review Committee, Finance Committee, Regional Issues, Berkshire Brownfields Committee, and our Berkshire Comprehensive Technology Development Strategy. These are how the agency, the staff at the agency is broken up into various departments. Our community planning side, which is the team I'm part of, we handle a lot of master planning and whole space recreation plans. We do a lot of planned use work as well. Our community development, housing, we run a pretty successful community or housing rehab program, do the community development block grant program. We also have a home occupation loan program that helps residents make accessibility improvements to their homes. We have our data and service information. If you ever looked at Berkshire Blueprint, it's a monitors all kinds of data about what's happening in the county in sort of every sort of aspect. We have an economic development team, helping with long-term economic strategies, our environmental and energy team, public health. I think a lot of the COVID vaccinations that came out of our public health, the regional efforts to combat opioid misuse that came out of that department as well. Transportation, I do a lot with the federal funding dollars. You may have saw in the news recently, seventeen million dollar, in seventeen million dollars to get all the permitting and design work to extend the rail trail up into North County. That was a, that's an example of some of the stuff we do. And then we have an administration, administrative staff, which is the backbone of the organization. So really, none of this happens without them on it, so. So ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. So what this is, is so the ADA is a civil rights legislation originally passed in nineteen ninety and then updated to passing ten. So it, it is a, it is there to make sure there's no discrimination against people with disabilities, ensure that people have equitable access to programs, services, activities. The title two of the ADA is the one that specifically requires municipalities to comply with with all of theirs. The self-evaluation process, the intent of that is to, oh, sorry, one more thing. Any municipality with fifty or more people are required to have an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan.
We do, we do not currently have one, so that's why.
We have fifty volunteers.
We do, certainly do.
Fifty volunteers.
More than fifty volunteers.
So the self-evaluation component of that, that is a process to identify all of the existing accessibility barriers throughout the community, whether that is physical or if whether it's a, you know, communication barrier or whether it's a sort of policy barriers that prevent people with disabilities to have equal access. The transition plan is sort of the follow-up component of it where take a holistic look at all of the accessibility issues and then set out course of how to address those barriers over the next handful of years. And then just as note, Department of Justice, they recommend that the plan gets updated every three years.
So while the, while the town's done, you know, a number of capital improvements to its buildings, ramps to the library and, you know, whatnot, we, we try to make sure that all our buildings are accessible to the extent we can. We've, we've not done this thorough of a process. And now the state, through various grants, through the housing choice designation, is saying, you, you have to do that. So it's really using those grants and that participation in certain state programs as kind of a carrot and stick approach. And luckily, they've made grant funding available so that, so that we can have consultants like the RPC help us through this.
So, you know, why is it important to have a plan? Well, it is a requirement, so that's pretty important. But it also really helps guide the capital spending. So if you're looking at doing, you know, various projects, this can really help guide that and guide, you know, how much you set aside to address accessibility issues. It is a prerequisite to obtaining funding from the Massachusetts Office on Disability, which can grant up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars for a project. So if there is a building in town that's inaccessible and you want to do like a ramp or something like that, Massachusetts Office on Disability can help with that. But you, you have to have this put into place. The demographics also demand it. So Great Barrington, according to the latest American Minority Survey, twenty-six point five percent of the residents are over the age of sixty. As you know, as you age, you're more likely to develop some, some type of disability. Eight point nine percent of the relatives, residents have self-identified as having ability. And I'll also add that, you know, a disability is one, is something that any one of us can encounter, whether short-term, long-term, at any point, this is it's pretty much certain that all of us at some point will have some type of disability. And then lastly, if you have facilities that aren't designed for accessibility, it makes it more user-friendly, more enjoyable for everybody. So, you know, it's a lot easier if you have to carry something in this building. You got a box full of something. It's a lot easier to go up a ramp than it is to try to go upstairs. So it just makes it easier for everybody. So the requirements for self-evaluation, so this is what the federal government requires out of them, is that the, the evaluation has to look at all the buildings, your, has to look at your public right-of-ways, has to look at, at your programs, your meetings. So is this meeting accessible if somebody came in here and had, you know, hearing challenges? Would, do you have an opportunity to support them and provide them the technology that they need to be able to participate?
Andy, you said, you said buildings. Is that town buildings?
Yes.
Only town buildings.
Yes, that's okay. Thanks. Yeah, so we'll be looking at the non-discrimination policies. There's a few policies that the, that are required. You have to have a notice of non-discrimination that is posted on your website. You have to have a ADA coordinator who's in place and you have to have that made known. And then you also have to have a grievance policy so that if somebody does encounter a barrier and they do not feel the town is adequately addressing it, they have a way to file agreements and they know that somebody will be looking at it and addressing it. And then also, we have to look at safety procedures and this is particularly around when it comes to structural purpose, you know, if there's an emergency, can somebody get in and out, can we get around that type of thing? So. So for the transition plan, so this, what you need for that is you have to have that inventory, which we've done through the self-evaluation process to get an inventory of all the barriers that would, that exist currently. You need to create a detailed list of what solutions there are to address it. So if, if you have a building that doesn't have, you know, adequate accessible parking, then you have to, this is how you're going to address it, you put it like this. If there are situations where you can't make the physical changes required, but you have a programmatic change you can make, so just as an example, if this room was inaccessible because the elevator was down, you would move your meeting to an inaccessible location. Those are the type of things you do, and that's the intern steps that a municipality can take. And then it also assigns a municipal entity to be the, to the responsibility to actually make that change. So if there's a structural barrier that DVW is sort of in their sort of realm, then this will identify DVW's responsibility is to address this at this time. So this is about the process of how we do it. So a key part of this is public participation. So the planning board is, you know, would love to have your, your participation in it, the community, the, the people. This board and the community, they know very well what, what barriers, what's important, what's, you know, what, what, where the, the priority should be placed. Anyone else gonna be working with the council on aging? So we've got a meeting scheduled with the Council on Aging Director to talk through that and now try to get their involvement in this as well. It all involves the evaluation of services and programs. So we'll be talking with sort of Department of Leadership and finding and asking the questions of how do they address accessibility issues? We'll be looking at all the written policies that are, do exist to make sure those are sort of modern, up to par. We will be going to site visits to all, all of the to the, this is open spaces and Mr. Bull and I, we're doing all the buildings and all of the parks and open spaces. So we'll be doing, we'll be going out to those and inspecting them and then trying to identify those barriers. We'll also be evaluating the website for its web content accessibility guidelines. In April of last year, Department of Justice adopted a new rule that all communities have to have their website and their content to be accessible to people with disabilities. So we'll be looking at the website, looking to make sure that there's like color contrast that you can, the photos are, they have alternate text so that somebody using a screen reader, they can, that is going to work appropriately on their website. And then we are also going to do one-mile sidewalks. We'll be assessing the curb cuts, looking to see that the, that is tactile mats at the intersections. We'll be going through those, we're going to inventory those, we're going to inspect those, make sure those are sort of still in good condition if they're there. We'll know places where they're not there, they need to be installed. You know, your crosswalk lights and signals, do those have, are, you know, do those have the audio sound to help along? So we'll be doing that type of inventory, which will really help, while also looking at slopes of say sidewalks of, you know, over time with it sort of, it's kind of moved a little bit and now the sidewalks looking, you know, a little steep on the cross slope, we'll be able to identify those spots and those can be sort of priority, priority areas to sort of address.
Some of the, some of the work with the parks and open spaces, that'll be work that we would have to be doing, want to be doing as part of the open space recreation plan too. So this is a nice overlap with that effort.
Good question before you proceed. Actually, I have two questions. So with regard to the one-mile sidewalk, is that just like a random sampling of sidewalk?
Yeah, so I mean, we, I talked to Chris about this, trying to identify. I don't think we settled on the exact parameters, but I think we want to sort of identify a section of, of town where that would make the most sense. So I think we did briefly discuss maybe, you know, includes a tonic where there hasn't really been necessary, a lot of like more recent work to the, to the area. So that might be a good ideal place to go and, you know, check, see the conditions and see if things are, are worn or changed or anything like that.
Yeah, definitely want to make sure that if you're doing a sampling, it's a sampling in Husaton and a sampling in Great Barrington in the, both the dense population centers, you know, in and around where there are a variety of services being provided, be they libraries or churches or something like that, so.
One of our thoughts with Husaton was, I think the main sidewalks in the village were done in the late two thousands, oh, seven, oh, eight, something like that. Not sure what the guidelines were then. A lot of the downtown Great Barrington sidewalks have been done since then, over the past five, six, ten years, assuming those are more up to date. So we thought maybe we should focus on the older ones first. But that's, we can, we can talk about that.
Is there an opportunity to have you look at bus stops too? Folks that may need to arrive by foot to a bus stop.
And so we could put that in with the sidewalk. Yeah, we can put that in part, as part of the sidewalk assessment, that's sort of pedestrian, pedestrian way, absolutely.
Thank you.
I can get into the weeds, but I'll wait.
We're not doing any, any weeds or gardens. Ready?
So the way we go about evaluating the facilities, we use the two thousand and ten federal standards and we use the Massachusetts Architectural Access Boards. It's five twenty-one, CMR, those are the, the state regulations and design standards for accessibility. They're mostly the same, but there are some places where they're slightly different. And in those cases, it's the stricter standard is the one that we use. And then as we approach the facilities, Department of Justice has your priority areas. Your first one is the approach and entrance, your access to the goods and services, restrooms, and then they have additional access. Those would be like phones or water fountains, make sure.
What are phones?
Was that?
Yeah.
It wasn't ninety-five, so.
Maybe it was twenty-ten, man.
Yeah. So this is the timeline. This is a, this is done.
What is the photo?
So that is, oh yeah, so that photo is, it's, it's a, it weighs the amount of strength it is to open a door. So with interior doors, it's five pounds of strength is, you have to be five pounds of strength or less to open them. So that's a little tool we have that we put and it'll tell you the weight of effort it takes to open the door. So that would be, that would be one of those things that we'd be noting in the report, if the doors were too heavy, which is a
Temperature too.
As you can see, there's also a door handle on that, which is not in compliance either because your door handles should be, you need to open them with a, be able to open them with a closed fist. So the door handle, as in the photo too, is also something that we recommend getting replaced, so. But, so yeah, so the next steps on this, so in January, we're having those kickoff meetings. So let's hear me talking, talking with you, introducing the project, getting your feedback on this, and then also with the Council on Aging. So in February, the weather's still a little rough, so we're going to probably do a lot of the stuff that we can do that's not really, you know, physically in person. So we'll be looking at some of the town policies. We'll be interviewing stakeholders and we'll be doing the sort of website evaluation process there. In March, when the weather breaks, that's when we hope to do the site visits and get, get all those done, taken care of, sort of do our analysis of it, and then write up the draft of the evaluation report. In April, at that point, with the evaluation done, we'll take them on to April where we want to work with the community on developing that transition plan. Where, where are the priorities? Where should they be? And sort of develop that out. In May, hopefully, we'll be able to incorporate all the public and this board, the staff, the Council on Aging, sort of get all those comments that they're at and sort of get to a final draft. And then in June, hopefully, we can get, you know, this board and the board of selectmen's approval to approval on that, so.
Okay, great.
We have a question. I also have a good chance, and we talked about the publicating of all the transition plan, but what about identifying needs that they see? Are you going to, do you want us to invite the public to our hearing on this or?
That.
How does that work?
So that would be wonderful. I was, you know, I do have a meeting with the Council on Aging and one of my asks to them was to see if they could have anybody who would be willing to sort of serve and, and come out to be maybe some of the site visits with us. I think ideally, we'd be looking to have somebody with some experience and there's somebody with a disability or a caretaker or something like that to actually be part of the evaluation process as well. So that's sort of yet to be determined. We're sort of just taking it off right now, but certainly welcome any type of, of sort of input we can get from that part of it.
Should this board set aside a meeting or part of a meeting just for that purpose and publicize that opportunity?
Like my weed question, which I won't bring, but I would, you know, I would go to that meeting and say, what about this? I know this is not a big deal, but it's the obstruction and private road and something rather, what can we do about it?
Might have to be updated.
What was that?
Would have to be updated.
Yeah, they're recommended.
Of course, they recommend writing one.
Do we have a disability committee?
A disability committee was set up. It's, unfortunately, one of its members passed away and it never really got its got going and it's been kind of defunct.
I just wondered if that was available as a resource.
Yeah, you know, and, and I think our first instinct would be to have that commission lead this effort, but since it's a defunct and this board's doing a lot of thinking and, and, you know, for open space and other items and eventually master plan, it seemed like a natural fit for this board to, in the absence of a, of a town commission on disability, to adopt this project and see it forward. Yeah.
That's a good idea. What do you guys think? Okay with adopting the project and helping? Yeah, absolutely. All right, Andy, what else can we do to help you?
For now, it's, I mean, just wanted to introduce myself in, in the project with all you. And so, yeah, I mean, I guess, sounds like you guys want to be involved in it, so I'm welcome to attend the next meeting and we can go from there. So I do have some business cards, so I'll just leave it with Chris here.
Is there a last slide that has your contact information?
It does. Yeah, the last slide has contact. And I also be, so my colleague Jocelyn here. So she'll be, she's on this project as well.
And i- if you're around in the community, you'll have like gear on, this is your VRPC or something. You know, you take questions from people, you're wearing safety vests or something, so we can let people know that.
Actually thinking that.
Yeah.
No.
Strange person.
It's a good, it's a good question, so, but no.
We gotta get you a safety vest then, okay.
Planning and process.
Yes, exactly. Send questions too.
Yeah.
Okay, super, great. So should we put you on our agenda for late February or?
Yeah, let's talk about what makes sense. I'll see if Andy and Jocelyn can, can make a meeting then and
Okay.
we'll leave plenty of time to maybe do a little publicity for that meeting. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks, Ian.
I assume these business cards are worth less than you know.
I imagine so. You can use them as a bookmarker.
These are the original printings. They might be, they might be worth, it might be worth something, you know.
Have a good one.
Yes. All right, and so we'll take up the OSRP in a future meeting?
Yeah, my task for you for tonight was to develop a scope and timeline for the open space and recreation plan. I haven't been able to do that yet, but hopefully next time at, at your early February meeting, I'll, I'll present that to you and we'll talk about what that process looks like and pardon me.
It's gonna be Zoom.
The next meeting, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to Simon's Rock Campus. We, because our board meeting was rather small, we minimally attended last round. We wanted to make sure we had a full complement of the board to have discussion about how we're thinking about Simon's Rock Campus. So two meetings ago, we had just a really brief discussion about whether or not we want to consider preemptively taking some action to potentially put forward a zoning modification at upcoming town meeting that would, in concept, provide some overlay on the campus. It might give flexibility to the redevelopment of that site. And so just to recap for folks in the audience and our board, if we remember correctly, the campus currently is in educational use, which is not subject to zoning. It's to exempt use, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris. And the campus consists of a number of parcels. I can't remember exactly, it's like a dozen or more parcels. Each with multiple buildings, many with multiple buildings on them. Not all of them have multiple buildings on them. So they are already mixed use and the R2 zone that underlies the campus does not allow some mixed use. So I think that's one of the initial sort of challenges of that site need face if it's redeveloped for use other than education. So I guess I'd like to just get some sense from you all as to whether or not we think we want to consider an overlay for the campus and try and bring something to town meeting, or if we want to wait and respond to a development proposal that might come forward, you know, in the next year or so. So it's really kind of act now, act in the future. Yeah.
Yeah.
Malcolm's frowning at me.
Well, I'm kind of in favor of doing an overlay district beforehand, rather than waiting for a developer who may not even propose something because the zoning isn't there. I mean, we may discourage developers if we don't have the zoning replaced. On the other hand, we're also going to apply for a DLTA money to help us figure out what the possibilities are. And, you know, the RPC may be able to help us with it.
Why is it DL? You said DL.
The RPC.
Oh, I thought you said DL.
DLTA money, which is direct virtual mobile.
Technical assistance.
Technical assistance. So basically, the, the VRPC gets a lot of money each year to do new projects for the town, so.
So it'd be like, we, we apply for the funds from Berkshire Regional Planning and we ask for an allocation of funds in an amount that allows us to do a study. So for instance, when we did that.
DLTA or something Delta.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The LTA is where the money stores for this project. And Zoom. And presumably, we, you know, the product, the purpose of the project is to identify what, you know, feasible purposes. It would be, and so if we put together a bylaw at this point. It may be premature if there are other things that pop up in this DNT, uh, in the RPC site. So I, I would say we need to do it before the fall, when, when. You know, when Simon's Rock closes for, for, for good, but I don't know that we can have it ready in a time for the town meeting. It's, it's, it's the study that needs to be done, and it has to be done in time for us to convene by law. Have public hearings and all the other stuff that we have to do before that meeting. So it's really, I think it needs to be done in March, early April.
Yeah, I mean, there may be an intermediate step, right? That just allows for mixed use on parcels within this overlay zone. Maybe it's a simple half step.
Or, or maybe we could think about a special time to, to address this when we get older.
That's a possibility as well. Yeah, that's a possibility as well. Pedro, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Malcolm. I think we should. Put something together now, but don't know that it really matters if we wait for technical assistance from the GFC. Yes, for example, we put together a bylaw that was presented last week. Which is a sort of general bylaw for procedures and processes. That allows people to come to us and talk about their projects. So the way I see it is, you know, we wait for the research and we get told what the possibilities are. And then we drive them a bylaw. How does that reflect those possibilities? It may get in the way of things that we may not have thought of. I like the idea, just like the, the mills over the district is the same thing. Want to do something in the Houstonic Mills, come to the pound, let's, let's, let's talk about it. I like that.
Okay.
Given that it's modeled very much after the Housatick Mills, what was the response? That we've received thus far to people working with that as part of the bylaws?
The, the Houstonic Mill Overlay District, I think, has been invoked only for one project. And that was for a renovation of an existing building. Of a section of the old Barbieri lumber building into a residential. Yeah, it's the building that Pulse just bought. But the main mills that. That were studied at the time, this was like twenty ten-ish. I think some planning board members and some, some residents of the village looked at the, the mills. And made some recommendations to the planning board at the time that led to the Mill Overlay District. They identified the problems there, sim- similar to here. Where you had buildings crossing parcel lines and not respecting the typical standard zoning setbacks. And uses that weren't necessarily allowed, or possible future uses that weren't allowed in what up there is an industrial district. So similar to here, they identified some issues with the current situation. And said that, that all those things may be obstacles to redevelopment. An overlay district that says, you know, these are the benefits we want to achieve. You know, tell us how you can do it. An overlay district that creates that process could be a good thing, and town agreed. The main mills haven't really come forward. I think it's more of a question of. Of. Of ownership of the parcels. I think the, the, the landowners, the mill owners up there haven't. Necessarily. Made the plans for redevelopment, you know, haven't, haven't carried those plans forward to a point where they need to come to the planning board. Discuss permanent. For, for Simon's Rock, I, I mean, you never know. Somebody may have a great idea in the mills. And okay, there's a process that wouldn't have been there before. There's a process to, to talk about that. Same thing could happen with Simon's Rock. The planning board could put together an overlay district, town meeting could say, great. Here's a district that could allow a mix of uses, a wise use of the existing buildings, the athletic center, et cetera. Great, and then nobody comes forward. That's okay. That's okay to have a process in place is, is, is still a good thing. Maybe down the road, if we're able to get technical assistance. There's other items to add to the zoning, to the overlay district, to tweak it, to recognize some things that we don't know. But as Brandy said, maybe this is a two-step process. First step, get something on the books that creates a process. That allows a, a good reuse of the land or the buildings or, or certain parcels of the whole. Then second step, do something a little bit more detailed based on some more analysis.
Sure, question for you. So if we do nothing, and you do get somebody interested in the property. Presenting a project to the town that doesn't conform to anything that you allow in the R2. Wouldn't they be asking us to change zoning?
Possibly, and Jonathan had a point last time that some buildings and uses may retain a pre-existing non-conforming status. So that may be a route that somebody can take. It might be kind of a clunky. Route with a lot of legal loopholes. I don't know. If, if owners came forward, developers came forward with a use that the town hadn't thought of or didn't have on the books. They, they could, as owners, propose a zoning change to town meeting.
Right, and we couldn't do, we couldn't grant rights to a project, neither us nor. ZPD could grant rights to a project that doesn't in some way relate to any of our sound.
Right, right, yeah.
I'm trying to read this line here that's under nine point eight seven, it's use regulations. It says, special permits. Advocate may apply for a campus overlay district, special permit may develop all or portions of a camp, campus overlay district in accordance with the question. Is that kind of like, with a special permit, you could do what you want and not really.
A, a special permit is a way of. A special permit is a way to consider what the regulation should be for a, a project. Or a specific project in a specific place. Yeah, it's, it's a way to. Yeah, and because there's a due process, you know. There are public hearings, there are notifications to others, there's a, there's a legal process and people have the ability to appeal. It's, you know, it's, it's a alternative way to. To talk about writing regulations rather than going to town meeting with a regulation that you don't really know if it works or not.
And, and so just for reference, just for the public, so at our last meeting. We looked at some potential draft language for an overlay district. Which provides a purpose and where the, the overlay would be and where it's applicable. We haven't really discussed this at all, but one of the, up to your point, Jackie, one of the. Proposed sections is prohibited uses. So I think that was one thing we wanted to think about. What don't we want to have there? You know, we are trying to respect the underlying residential district around there that has agricultural use. And, and has recreational use and has residential use. There's a school there that has very different buildings, a science building, you know, a cafeteria, an art center. Recreational facility, like, so how do we sort of find uses that are compatible, but not too inconsistent with the rest of the. Adjacent uses. Yeah, so I mean, I think we need to have that discussion about are there things we don't see there? We should be specific about putting them in here. Jonathan?
Any question? You referred twice to mixed use.
Yes.
I'm thinking you're gonna have brown floor. Offices and restaurants and stores with housing above.
It's, it's a fair point that you're making. I, I think it's a semantics issue. Maybe I should have said multiple use.
Mix of uses, maybe?
No, no, I was not thinking, you know, like in some of our denser areas where we would have one building with. Although, I don't know, maybe we would. I mean, there's already a student union that has a, you know, retail, you know. And so, office space, and so. I, I don't know. I think we haven't had the chance to have a discussion about it. But are you, do you have concern in particular about mixed use?
Well, yeah, I don't think that's a place for retail. Also, I think that. I'll come back to it.
Okay, sure.
No, but I, I think we should.
Okay, we have, hang on one second, I'll get to you in one second, Claudia. We have not spent time going over this in any kind of detail, right? We just talked high level last time.
Just very high level, you know, it's, it's modeled on the mill district. The, the board hasn't talked about. The, the purpose statement. The uses you might want to see, the uses that you would never want to see. What, what the approval criteria might be. You know, those sorts of things. And those can be as specific or as vague as you want, but, you know, obviously, everybody needs to.
I meant to say is that. Since we created the equals economic overlay. The middle, Mr. Overly. We've made a lot of progress on this board, stepping away from special permits. And this, I think, doesn't recognize that in any way. Whatever you do there is going to be a special permit. And, you know, I don't think that's the way we encourage development.
It's definitely worth a discussion. Yeah, definitely a discussion. Claudia, did you still have a question about this?
After one thing, most are probably right in that zone, but I mentioned at the last meeting that the property was in the water quality protection overlay district. That was told that a little tiny southern portion of it is.
It's. Should I answer that? It's the water quality district. Uh, is. Yeah, let me just, I'm sorry, I had the, I had a map up here.
Is that, is that in that? Not over there anymore, is it? Because it's all in the zoning now.
The water quality zone two encompasses. Portions of certainly everything that is west of Alford Road. The, the, the red buildings, the art center, so that's in the zone two. The, and I, you know, I should put this on screen.
The reason why I'm asking is because the water quality protection, well, really, district zone two protects the neighborhood as it is.
The.
Yeah, well, save it, Chris, because I actually brought from.
Here, I'll just, if I can just answer that question briefly, while other people may want, just, just one. So the on-screen, the polka dots on screen. Is the aquifer protection area, the zone two of the water quality protection district. And I don't know if, can you see the cursor on the screen? Not really. But the lake within the polka dots, that's, you know, there's that existing lake on campus across from the red buildings.
So it's.
The soccer field is in it, the parts of the Kilpatrick Athletic Center. So, so yeah, portions of the lower campus are in the, the aquifer area.
I actually have a much bigger map, Chris, if you don't mind. It's from the master plan that you put together basically. It's a figure thirty-five, and it shows an extensive amount of this property in the water quality protection overlay district. And just I'm sure that you're all very well aware. I've been protecting that water quality protection overlay district for twenty-two years now. We're supposed to have a wellhead protecting out there. We're supposed to have expanded the zone too. But before you consider some type of overlay district to develop this property. Please thoroughly think about what you're doing. I have a question, Malcolm. Aren't you the chairman of the Berkshire Regional Prime Intervention?
I think in the, the way. The way most overlay districts would work is they, they all stay in place. So even if there was a campus overlay district, it would still have to abide by also. All underlying zoning and the water quality overlay district, for example. So they would all have to be in alignment for anything to, to be permitted.
So the point you're making is that even with an overlay, it doesn't take away the water quality. That would still remain and have to be considered as a valid. Yeah, and I think we are concerned about protecting water quality, so.
My point is there water quality protection overlay district development, you know, is heavily restricted.
Yes.
So let's please keep it that way.
Absolutely.
It's our act of.
Yeah, I agree.
Water is a commodity. Thanks.
Absolutely, thank you, yeah. And as we go further into the discussion, if you've got, you know, comments or concerns, please don't hesitate to read them. Okay, yeah.
One question about.
Could you just state your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Ellen Warren.
Yep.
I have a quick question about pre-existing non-conforming uses.
Yeah.
Property, in particular, the athletic center. Um, there was a reference to this, I think, at the last meeting. And I was trying to figure out if you could explain that, Chris, perhaps. What, what would constitute a loss of that?
I, I can't get into all of the legal dimensions because I'm just, I'm just not.
That's actually something we asked Chris to look into, and I don't think we've received anything from him.
It's difficult to dig into, to all the legal dimensions on that, but. The athletic center is, I presume. I presume permitted as part of the educational use as a whole. So if educational use goes away. Does that leave the athletic center as an allowed athletic center use on its own? I don't know. That's a question for land use attorneys to, to answer. A lot of times, a pre-existing non-conforming use stays and retains those rights. If it existed before a certain zoning came into effect or zoning change occurred. In this case, I, I'm not, I'm not sure if that's the case. I don't know when the athletic center came into effect. I don't know how it was permitted, so I don't know what vested rights. Quote-unquote, to use the term, what vested rights it might have. So it's, it's really kind of an unknown. It's a, it's a question worth trying to answer, but I, I just haven't been able to dig into that. I think any.
Free time?
I think any, a, a, a property owner, a developer, or somebody who wants to look into whether or not it can continue. Would want their own land use attorney to, to figure that out and to make that case one way or the other.
We, we are really encouraging on your.
But I think really, it is a legal question, and Chris is a lot of things, but he's not an attorney, so. Ellen, I don't know if that's a satisfactory response, but we're just sort of figuring, trying to figure it out ourselves. Yeah, yeah, so, so if you, the big issue for us is. Everything there, we presume, is tied to the educational use. And in some instances, there are houses that are on their own lots. And so if the education use goes away, that zone already allows houses. So we don't see a problem with those individual residential uses. But these more complicated buildings that are not anticipated in our zoning code, we, we don't, we're not sure. And so that's why we're having this conversation about an overlay, because we'd like to potentially protect the continued use of those buildings. Or the adaptive reuse of those buildings for some very similar purpose. Again, while respecting the residential neighbors in the abutting area and the water quality issues that Claudia raised.
Yeah, but assuming, for example, the athletic center was, let's assume it wasn't in, in the water quality district. Let's assume it was just on a plain parcel with no other restrictions. Would you be able to come in tomorrow and request to, to build an athletic center in that zone? No. So that's, you know. If the educational goes away, what vested rights remain? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, it's pretty clear.
All right, so it sounds to me like we do want to move forward with the overlay. And we, we want to do this on the timeline to get it to town meeting for May. And so. Does, yeah, can we look at it at our meeting in February? I have some comments. Maybe what we can do is we can email our comments to Chris, especially if they're like editorial comments, but I think.
It's much better to talk about.
You want to, well, I think we can do both, but I'm just thinking, you know, like, if, if you're like, this phrasing is really wrong. It gets us further down the path, given where we are. Um, it gets us further down the path, given where we are in climate lines.
We can do more now if you want.
Do, do you all feel like you, we can have that discussion now? I wasn't sure. I know you did, you were here at the last meeting, but Jackie not gonna material be worse, I don't want to just spring it on them. Are, are those of you who weren't here at the last meeting, are you, do you feel comfortable proceeding with a little bit of?
Yeah, I'm fine, and just so folks are aware, this is, as Brandy said, the first time the board is digging into it. And this is the board's process of drafting a regulation which would then. If the board decides to move forward, we get turned submitted to the select board. Select board would say, okay, have a public hearing, the planning board would publicize that there would be a public hearing that, so this process, this, it's not just tonight. There's a process that happens over the next few meetings, the next month or two. As, as the, um. As the town prepares for the.
And there will be an official public hearing on this. Yeah, absolutely, so all of our meetings are open in the public. We have to put together a draft and then we have to send it to the select board, then it comes back to us, and then we actually have a public hearing here. That's like the, the, what we consider the final draft. We do often make changes if the public raises things that have not thought about, um, which definitely happens. Um, and then our goal is to issue a final, final draft, that's what goes to town meeting.
Select board review public or is that just?
Nope, it's public, all public meetings.
In fact, they don't. Their, their only role in the process is to say, thank you for working on it, go have a public hearing, they don't, they don't dig into it. It's more, but sometimes they do, but it's more of a step in the process, but really this board is probably where you'll want to focus your attention.
So the public hearing, by the way, is, it's, that's advertising, that's the place where the public gets to. Give feedback to us. Like we don't do that first, it's not like this rate, these ratings are, it's mostly that's. But, but we can always take comment. At meeting with certain.
Right, we just have to be mindful that there is a timeline to get this to, um, town meeting, and so we've got. We've got until the end of March to sort of wrap this up, so we, we don't have a ton of time, but we'll get going on it.
But in comment can also be sent to you to then give to the rest of the board. So that it doesn't have to even take place during the meetings.
Oh, sure, yeah, emails can come in at any time, um, what were you gonna add?
In terms of timeline, the planning board should feel comfortable with your draft. By the time you get done with your next meeting, which is February sixth, you need to be done with your draft. So you can send to the select boards, the select board can send it back to you, so that then you can have a public hearing, then you can make more revisions. But, yeah, you're pushing up against the timeline already.
When you're given that timeline, uh, and we were talking about, uh, potential prohibiting uses. I wonder if we should ask the public if they want to send any ideas for prohibited uses. Uh, maybe to, to Chris or to you for discussion.
So I, I'm o- open to that entirely, I think, um. You know, to Claudia's point, the water quality protection overlay district has an extremely long list of prohibited uses. Those are, you know, already incorporated by reference, right? Um, and I think part of what we want to do is see kind of like, what, what else is missing, like where?
But, but also that's, there's a large.
John is chopping at the bit, we better let him tell us about his red lines, he's gonna explode over there, go ahead, John. We're, we are talking about it.
No, I'm talking about the lane.
Yes.
I think we covered timeline.
Let's go, um, let's go section by section, please, um, so first section would be purpose. To, wait, hold on, and Chris, can you put that on screen while Jonathan's talking, so the public can see it?
To encourage and provide for coordinated and mixed development of residential, business, industrial, manufacturing, institutional, and organizational.
This is taken from the mills, so. Please, please edit. Yeah, I know, for you to cons. Yeah, for you to consider. Let's consider.
We're talking. So I agree with you, do you want it to say light industrial? Do you want there to be no manufacturing? Um, I think we could think about that, because there is a science building with laboratories. Yeah, there's a maintenance building with shops in it, there are studio buildings in the Daniels Art Center. With kilns and woodworking equipment, I mean, there's, there are the trappings of manufacturing. And so is there a, a means of, do you want to say artisan workshops or something? I mean, like, do you want to define it more narrowly? I think we need to consider what buildings are there and, and how they're being used now.
Business of industrial and all that.
Corporate office space, I, I don't know, I mean, there's a lot of office space there.
None of it's vibrant, so, I mean, it's just really, how, how, how open do we want to keep this umbrella?
A- and do we want to say only in existing buildings and no new buildings with those uses? I don't know, I mean, those are questions to ask and answer.
I want to talk about it. And. And this says that within the campus overlay district, construction of new structures. Shall require a special permit. That is fucking crazy, sorry, that is crazy.
So which number?
Encourage development in this town, or do we want to kill it?
Um, I don't want to have philosophy discussion with you, if you want to discuss the points of here, we can discuss the points here, so let's stick with the purposes. So let's go back to number five, cause I heard your, your call about industrial and manufacturing.
I don't have any answers, I just want you to think about them.
It may be that statement number five may not be apropos at all, I, I mean, it can be reworded, it can be struck, it can be. You know, I don't, I don't know, you all need to. Consider that.
Not provide individual feedback, of course.
So number two, I would like to suggest we say existing structures there. Instead of historic structures, again, recognizing this came from the mills.
There's one historic.
Existing may be historic, but historic may not be existing, right? There are a number, yeah, the Pebble House. Leibowitz was all, uh, well, the barn and all the other sister. But I'm saying existing, right, that's what we're trying to help facilitate the reassessing structure. Um, okay, number three, to create employment opportunities both short term and long term, any issue with those purposes? Well, you're asking, talk about the language, so we're going through it.
Well, I just have fun talking about the language where I am.
Well, you don't get to do that, cause then everybody, I want to go section by section, so where you have an issue, you can. Okay, fine, um, to increase the supply of a variety of residential dwelling units. Is that existing buildings, or do we want to see new residential up there? I would say, yes. Yeah, okay, so. Residential dwelling units, both in existing buildings. And new construction.
It's two hundred and sixty-six acres.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just wanting to get the purpose now, then. Number five, to encourage and provide for the coordinated and mixed development of residential business. Light industrial, light manufacturing. Institutional or educational uses, I mean, we would have to define those, I don't think we have light industrial defined.
I, I think taking out industrial leading manufacturing would be, would, would keep the umbrella, I think, if you will.
I, I mean, you, you could just delete number five and, and hang your hat on number six. Which is appropriate to the, the, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Discovering what's appropriate to the site.
It's a big question, because besides the campus, what else is there?
What do you mean, on, on the two hundred and thirty-five acres?
No, 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 outside of it, so budding, so like the area. Like, uh, is, does the campus like define the area, or does the rest of what's going on there, which is?
The surrounding areas are too, so predominantly residential, right, with the exception of the former veterinary clinic to the west. But it's residential.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I mean. So I mean, I think it is a bigger question, you know. I mean, I think everybody wants to see the campus reused, right? Nobody wants to see it sheltered. But if. If somebody is gonna take the campus and redevelop it, then. Like, what is that redevelopment, right? And so, like, if you're greatly expanding, like, those other uses. Then that sort of becomes the area, right? It's not R two anymore, because it is so big.
I think we have a number of tools in our toolbox.
But the rest of the area, what I'm saying, even the surrounding area, even though you can only do what you can do on it.
Yeah, the underlying density would still apply.
I'm not sure, what are you proposing?
No, I, I just think it's, you know, because if you really expand what you can do on the property. Like, so reusing the existing buildings, like, the question between that and redeveloping, meaning adding a bunch of new buildings to it. Like, that, those are two very different things, right? Because if you add a bunch of additional buildings where the uses are greatly expanded. You know, then it has a big impact on the surrounding area. Whereas, and if you reuse the buildings. The existing buildings, that has a much smaller impact, cause it's a huge site, I mean, you can develop the heck out of it, and, you know.
But I would, I would, I would say that's more of a discussion for special permit than is a discussion at this point, because. I wouldn't want to see this prohibited anything right now, in January. I mean, you know, we, because we don't, we don't have a crystal ball, we don't know who's gonna come in with a proposal to do what. Uh, so the more we prohibit, the more we restrict. And at this point.
Hypothetically speaking, you can get two hundred new houses built there, is that what you want to see? That would have a tremendous impact on you.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, okay, so we're striking.
Uh, Jim.
Five, potentially, um, six, we talked about seven, to encourage flexibility in site and architectural design restoration and building massing. Yes, keep it. Two, number eight, to promote development that maximizes pedestrian and bicycle activity, access safety and preserves open space and recreational opportunities. Nine, to promote environmentally sustainable development.
Especially water.
Especially water, okay. Jonathan, do you have anything else in purpose?
Uh, no.
Okay, um, we'll work on the numbering, would this be nine fifteen?
Yes, probably.
Okay. Whatever the number is, so using this numbering, nine eight two establishment and location. I, I don't think we have any question about the establishment and location, I do think there was one parcel there I heard might not be part of the. Group of sales that belongs to a private individual. I think we have to check with Bard that all of these parcels are the ones that are potentially first.
I, I ran the parcels and this is what I came up with, but we'll double check, obviously.
Um, anybody have anything else on establishment and location?
Even if there wasn't a parcel, but was included, it doesn't necessarily mean it shouldn't be part of the.
I mean, I think at some point, we have to have a conversation, like, we want to let Bard know we're doing this, right? And they may come back and say, hey, these parcels have already been, you know, like the single family house parcels that I mentioned before, I mean, are they gonna stay on the table or not? I don't know. Um, nine eight three applicability. Any questions or comments?
Structure of new structures.
Yeah.
With a special permit.
I mean, certain, certain new structures, maybe you do want a special permit, certain other new structures, maybe you don't.
It's logically going to be house.
So, um, your concern, Jonathan, is that first sentence, that says shall require a special permit?
Yeah, the whole sentence there, new structure, reconstruction, extension, alteration, substantial structural change in existing structure. See, I, to me, this special permit is what gives us the flexibility to have a big umbrella. Uh, if we don't have special permits now, I'm gonna think that we need to be more specific on what, what the uses are and what the, uh. Uh, what the restrictions are, what the uses. If we, if we, if we leave this a special permit, for now, we can have umbrellas as wide as we want and then evaluate proposals.
Jonathan, what is your primary? What, what are you, are you primarily concerned about restricting housing on the sites?
Anything. You want to build a new house there on two hundred and sixty-six acres, you need a special permit?
So there can be.
The overlay district, they can just go to the underlying zone.
Yeah, I mean, potentially, that's, that's, uh, that's what I was thinking too, that.
If it's permitted by the other ones, then they're gonna do it.
Right, right, so they'd only have to invoke, um. Well, Jonathan's point is that new construction does invoke this regulation, I think, I think that, I think that's a question.
But can't you build, can't you use the underlying zone without reference to the overlay?
You can, but this, this sentence, I think, restricts that.
That's if you adopt the overlay. It says here, you know, that, um. The underlying district was pertaining to, shall continue to be in full force, in fact, except to the extent this section will modify it. So, but you have to, you have to adopt the overlay district in order to.
Presumably, the overlay district is enacted, is adapt, is adopted. And then somebody. Wants to build a new house in a residential zone.
But they would.
But perhaps, perhaps instead.
Jonathan's point is that that would be restricted, so may, maybe the point is that, hold on, maybe the point is that you. The special permit shouldn't apply for. Construction itself, special permit should apply to uses, not a new structure, you build a new structure.
I'm missing something here, because if we're talking housing, and we're talking the underlying district where you can do three units on a lot. You'd be able to do that, that's for sure. If somebody wants to come in and build.
Not according to this.
That's, again, what I'm missing is that this will only work, this is how I understand overlay districts to work. Is that this language will be in place if this district for some reason is adopted.
I can't see what it means raising her hand.
Use on this, on the lot. And it's not housing, and you want to build housing, then you have to adopt.
Hold on, hold on, no, 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 Pedro, Pedro, can we look at one sentence? In nine eight two, the last sentence says, where standards or other requirements listed as part of this section conflict. With those in the underlying district, the provisions of this section shall apply. So that's saying that the overlay rules, not the underlying zone. So, so, okay, but. The conflict is the construction of new structures, and so perhaps we don't want to be that broad, new structures, right?
And it's possible that when, when the board wrote the mill overlay district, it really wanted to preserve existing structures.
Yeah, that's exactly.
You know, so the preference was, you know, if you're gonna build something new, we want to see it, because we really like the old stuff. And that may not apply here.
Can we just be clear?
I hope so.
Yeah, that, yeah, the way I understand overlay store. Is that they are not enforced unless somebody chooses to adopt the overlay.
No, the overlay is enforced if that applicability clause is triggered. And the applicability clause right now says new structures. That, that triggers the. That triggers the.
No, it says within the district.
Yeah, within the campus overlay district.
I, it, it's, listen, if it's causing this much consternation, we should take it out. Like, if we had fifteen minutes of discussion on it, I should put it out.
Includes some clause that says unless permitted in the underlying.
Nine three says, within the campus overlay district, and then it goes on to say. The construction of new structures and this and the other things would require a special permit, and then above it. The campus overlay district is an overlay, uh, is an overlay district and all regulations pertaining to the underlying district shall continue to be in full force. Except to the extent that the provisions of this section modify, amend, or supersede. What that tells me is that, okay, the R two is there, but I can also use this to do a project.
You know, the, what it says to me is that this modifies the R two for the overlay. That's not the way an overlay should work, in my opinion. Well, I mean.
I don't necessarily disagree, but I think there's a problem in this construction.
Yeah.
To adopt.
So is there some way to put some language, a clause in that says except for, uh, unless permitted in the underlying?
There must be. I'll try to work on that.
So we'll work on the applicability section. Um, with the intent that. What is already allowed in the underlying R two continues to be allowed without special permit.
From the tax triggering this district.
Okay.
So really.
Yeah. Yeah. Are there other? Other instances where we think a. Special permit should not be required?
Yeah, like the demolition of any structure. A portion there of it is. Greater than a thousand square feet that requires a special permit. Nowhere else in town does every, or special permit.
Well, I, I had noted that this, I wasn't sure what this section was there for, so I, I don't disagree with you, you know, so. That may be, again, part of the mill preservation.
Yeah, that was, that was to.
So what, why don't we strike that whole third paragraph then? Right? Because we want to encourage the adaptive reuse. Do we want to leave in alternation, alteration is defined?
Possibly. I'll look at that whole section.
Okay.
Point, point take.
Thanks. Okay, so we'll go into nine eight four. In fill. New structures conforming to the underlying zone may be constructed by right.
Okay, there we.
There we go.
Maybe that's that.
New structures in the campus overlay district not in conformance with the underlying zone may be permitted by special permit. How do we feel about that? Do we want to say new commercial structure, new non-residential structure? You don't want, you, you're on record not wanting any special permit at all?
Uh, maybe in certain cases, but not.
But generally, less special. Okay, I just want to understand where you're.
What types of uses? Like, very, very clear. I don't know. I'm not involved, but.
Presumably, anything allowed in the underlying zone. The R two zone is, would be okay, unless it's otherwise prohibited by the water quality. Presumably, anything. Not allowed in the R two would be. Prohibited here? Or should it be? Let's talk about it through a special permit.
More for the latter.
Yeah, I don't know. But, like, you know, rather than prohibit something that you just soon see it. Permitted with a special permit.
Mm-hmm. So that sounds like this language for eight four should sort of stay as it.
You know, make your case to the board, to the town, why it should be allowed in that.
I mean, at this point, because we don't know what proposals are gonna come down, right? There were lots of proposals.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so nine eight five, expansion of existing buildings. Existing buildings through a special permit under the section may be expanded, provided that such expansion. Is consistent with the existing buildings. Historic character and scale, um.
I don't think we need that.
The whole section expansion?
Because.
That's a historic building, I don't have to go through to. Some historic something around there. And. Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think. That should get stripped in.
That may be a holdover.
Yeah. Strike ninety-five.
Because I was gonna try to figure out what, what's all metal or what.
It's also hand scale.
Okay.
And then intensity of use.
Yeah.
More than one principal structure for a lot, maybe allowed by special permit. I can build three houses on my lot now.
Hmm.
By right. And you're saying that I need a special permit?
Yeah, that's pretty, that's old language, too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think the intention here is there, there are several. Right now, there's several buildings on. Several of the lots there.
True.
So the intention, I'm assuming.
Uh, there, there's no intention here. That's just leftover language. I didn't have any intention yet, but it could be an intention.
But I think there's something like that. Because the fact that we have more than one. Type of use on a single lot, I mean, we brought this up. Brains brought this up a lot. That needs to be addressed in here somehow.
Do we, well, so I guess the question is, do we just say maybe allowed?
Um. Well, maybe allowed, you know, I think that, because we don't have to, we don't have to have a special permit language in there anyway, it's sort of what I'm saying.
It's kind of what I'm thinking.
It might.
And. And maybe the term, maybe really need to address more than one principal use.
Maybe it's use.
Hundred and sixty-five years. Well, I would think so.
Yeah. Well, just, it is like fifteen or seventeen lots, yeah. Principally. More than one use?
Uh-huh. All right, we, we're covering the use elsewhere.
Yeah. It is intensity views, okay. Use regulations, nine eight seven, use regulations permitted uses, all uses permitted by right in the underlying zone zoning district are permitted by right in campus overlay district. Prohibited uses, this was left sort of blank and Chris had said, what do you want to prohibit here? So the following uses are prohibited. In the campus overlay, whether or not permitted in the underlying zoning. So I had written, um, you know, industrial, manufacturing, mining. Cannabis grow facilities, you know, anything that has like a really intense. Or nuisance component to it is probably something we want to prohibit.
In general. Are we just gonna get down to use table here and put it, yes, is in the news?
Yeah.
I mean, we really need a paragraph here for this, or is it not gonna go on the news table?
Yeah, so I think we need like. A list.
Right, right.
Don't we have a use table?
Districts are there, no.
Well, actually, well, it's a district.
I, I did this a couple of weeks ago, so I don't remember my whole thought process, but, um.
No.
What I was thinking we should do for start is just to look at the use table for R two. And see what is currently N. Not permitted and decide if any of those uses potentially should be allowed. And I had a note here hospitality, mix. Um, age restricted housing. Live work facilities or, um, units greater than nine. I, I believe I did this already where I went through it myself, but. Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, like, if they're N now, if they're not allowed. Possibly, but I, that's where I wanted to start. So.
Well, I think any housing that we have here is. Should be.
Because there's already dormitories that are for. You know. Hundreds of kids, there's already multifamily housing that's more than nine units, I think, like some. One group of housing that's like twelve or fifteen units. There's a number of things that we. We don't want to start out with nonconformities, right?
Right. We don't want to, we don't want to start off.
So that, that was my suggestion that we. You know, in the R two. We're already restricting hospitality uses, mixed uses, age restricted housing, live work and. And housing, residential housing with more than nine units, I think. For the overlay, we would want to allow those.
That, that's exactly where we're going through this exercise.
Yes.
Because basically they can't do anything with that property.
Yes.
And don't lose windows.
Right, right. So we may want to have a section under permitted uses, including these things, da, 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 da. Right?
Or air columns in the news table.
Hmm?
Or air columns in the news table.
Yeah, I don't know. What's easier?
I don't know. That's really a question for Chris.
Sorry, Claudia, yes?
Oh, yeah, so the property being in the waterfall protection overlay district. Um. It, one of the uses that would be permitted. Added to the zoning bylaws, specifically the water, water, especially overlay district section in two thousand and ten would be a hazardous waste combustion facility. I mentioned at the last meeting. That Simon's Rock and my property are in the two thousand and three source water assessment program report. Very small farm, we generally use hazardous waste. Was in P A numbers. So. That's something to really take under consideration and to the neighborhood of Simon's Rock, please, thanks.
Help me understand that a little bit better, please. So, your comment is that they have, they currently have a waste generation number.
It's in the source water assessment.
Okay.
Report, Randy, you can read it.
Okay.
But my point is actually that the property is in the water quality protection overlay.
I understand, yeah.
And in two thousand and ten. County Great Barrier Ten added to the waterfall protection overlay district provisions for a hazardous waste combustion facility. So I want everyone to be open and I want all of the town and the neighborhood to know. That that is a permitted right in the water quality protection overlay district.
Okay, I'm not aware of that.
It's in section, I think it's nine point two point eight. Of the waterfall protection overlay district section of the northern bylaw.
And you're saying your understanding is that it allows a hazardous waste combustion facility?
Permit it, yes, in the water quality.
Yeah, I can't imagine.
If this prohibited uses, and then it says except for very small quantity generator hazardous waste.
Yeah.
Which is Simon's Rock.
Yeah.
And it mentions a hazardous waste combustion facility, research nine point two point eight.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know.
Okay.
It's the prohibited except for.
It's correct.
It's the except for clause.
Except for making it permanent.
Yeah, so you want to make sure that.
Making it possible.
Or make sure that that covers what.
And if you don't mind, I'd like to make another point. Town spent a lot of time and a lot of money adding that provision to the zoning bylaw, and it was added in there for a purpose and a reason. Not just for looks.
Okay. All right, we'll have to cross check that. Anything else on use regulations that? You want to add?
We talked about the foot rule, adaptive use of new storage structure.
Um.
Where's, where are you, John?
Number three. Special permit, an applicant may apply for a campus overlay special permit to redevelop all proportions of the campus overlay district in a coordinated fashion. One special permit may be sought for multiple uses or structures applicable adaptive reuse of historic structure. Within the overlay district may be conducted upon issuance. So I, I think we decided we were striking anything related to historic structures, right? Because this is language from the mill overlay.
I think.
Strike that last sentence.
Yeah, the, the mill overlay was recognizing that essentially everything was too close to lot lines that wouldn't allow redevelopment, and so. I think this sentence was in there in order to allow for the possibility. But it doesn't really apply here.
Okay, to move on to nine eight eight. Dimensional standards, special permit granting authority may waive or reduce the requirements of section four point one and four point two of the bylaw. Only if it determines that the requested waivers or reductions. Further the purpose of this section. In place of these requirements, the following dimensional standards shall apply. I don't know if this, um. If, if we want to leave this in, but the thought I had here was. It may be. Desirable. Um, and maybe, Chris, this is a question I should have for you, like, if. If. There becomes a development scenario where, like, each billing is condoed. And their lot line is like their footprint?
The lot line is still the overall parcel, not individual condo units.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to worry about that.
So we get rid of everything here after the, um, first sentence.
We might not need all of the rest of this.
Yeah, I don't think you need them to. No, we need them. Are we gonna insist the structures have to be replaced with some footprint?
I don't think so.
Somebody else has a question.
Yes, sir. All right, could you?
Well, that.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, yeah, we, we can't see the participants online. Can, can you click into the participant tab and see?
It, it would, it would show a, it would show a pop in. But I can't, I made the participant tab smaller. There's none up there.
Is there someone, um?
I'll, I'll check.
Okay, you'll check. All right, do, so do we just want to leave the first sentence of the dimensional standards and strike one through six?
And, and, yeah, and then last sentence, I mean, the first part.
What's your bet?
I mean, the reason for that is that the mills, because they're like. On, like, there's zero setbacks, they're on.
Yeah, this is, this is mill language. I don't know that it matters here.
Want that if you have a structure now that's right on the lot line? And they're gonna demolish it? Do you, I mean, they have, these lots are big enough that they could. Move it.
Yeah, and I think that's why we're saying this could be removed.
Oh, so you're saying strike one as well?
Strike everything out.
Except for the first sentence.
Oh.
Yeah, like all of this. One through six, does that make sense?
I think the, um. The, the, as, as written here. Which was written for the mills, it was. There were, there were some. Some intents of that, that the intent of the district there was to create certain public amenities, which included historic preservation of the buildings, public access to the river. Pedestrian amenities and things, and it, and so I think this mill district was structured of. We can talk about the dimensional stuff if you will do this for the, you know, that was judged to be sort of a public. You know, we can waive this, but the public wants this. Um, here, I think. These particular standards don't, don't apply. You may have other public benefits that you want. To see here, you know, we'll waive this, but you have to. In return, you have to do this. I, I don't know. There's something you can think about now, or maybe in a future revision.
Then nine eight nine parking and loading. Um, I'm scrolling, yeah.
There is, now you have, you did have a hand.
And when leads off within mixed use developments.
Yeah. Is there someone? So is there? It's, I. I always think that's Eileen's cat and it flickers on and on. Um, parking, loading requirements for the use is established in section six, six one shall apply to the individual uses in the campus district. As part of the special permit application under the section, an applicant may request. Reduction to these requirements or alternative methods achieving the requirements. And then several examples are put forward. Um.
I, I think this number one is good, and I don't think that if we take away the mixed use.
So just striking that first clause in mixed use developments. So onsite parking, non-competing uses, applicants may propose reduction in parking requirements if based on analysis of peak demand. Which shall include considerations of public transit. Can be demonstrated. To the S P G A that the peak demand proposed uses do not overlap. I think that's how their parking is set up currently, and we're not big on wanting to produce lots of extra parking.
No, I can't, I mean, if, if some way, if they can, uh, but. The, the last clause in the sentence reads like. It's a mixed use development, but, um. Uh. Uh, I, I, I think this is a good. A good way to, uh, to leave the parking.
And, and maybe we simplify the language and just say something about shared parking.
Yeah. Well, I like the idea, but I, I, Jonathan's right, if you use the word mixed use, I'm just gonna use it.
All right. Um, so some version of that should stay in. Offsite parking, I don't think we want any offsite parking period.
Yeah, again, at the mills, there were sometime, there was some, some parcels didn't have any room at all, but others did.
Yeah, I would suggest just eliminating two altogether.
I wonder if the site for Kilpatrick. Is that with the lots?
The, currently, the parcel that it's on is the soccer field, the Kilpatrick, the parking lot. Some woods and a bunch of administrative buildings.
New courts.
And the tennis courts, yeah, that's right.
And part of it's in water quality and part of it's not.
Yeah, yeah. Um. So, strike two, yes?
Um, what, what about?
Followed to.
The parking lots.
Why do we want off?
On the campus.
Yeah.
I mean, there are parking lots on the campus.
There are.
Let's say that, uh, somebody comes in and says, you know, I want to buy this, uh, um, this parcel here and develop it. But I'd like, also like to contract the use of this parking lot, who already uses, rather than pay for something new.
Yeah.
Um. Is that considered offsite?
That's a good question. I mean, that's why I said under number one, maybe we want to expand on that and talk about shared parking on the campus or within the campus overlay?
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
Is that, again. Even the umbrella.
So offsite is really the wrong term. You want it.
Share.
Within the overlay.
Yeah.
Not over, you know, on Seacock Road.
Right.
So that maybe say something like parking could be said, parking permits could be satisfied with shared parking within the overlay district.
Other parcels within the.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, so instead of offsite, maybe. Shared parcels within overlay, shared parking within overlay.
So you're striking number two.
Well, rewriting it, maybe.
Flexibility that amongst, within the parcels in the overlay, there could be some shared parking. And I guess technically you could call that offsite, right, like if you're, if you're. If you're at the Kilpatrick and you're tired of people parking in the grass, which they sometimes do. Um, and you want to be able to use parking at the Fisher Center. There, maybe there's an arrangement, as Malcolm was saying, that it's recognition that there's peak parking. Okay, public parking? I, I don't know that post parking is an option here either, did we want to eliminate that?
Unless the town.
There's no. Public lots there.
Well, if it's, what if the town acquires one of the parcels?
And that would be shared parking.
That would be shared.
Or not just the town, I mean, somebody can go in there and buy five acres and put a parking lot in it to serve as the rest of the.
Well, parking lot isn't currently a permitted primary use, right, and I don't know that I, I don't know that I would go for that. I'd suggest striking three.
Probably.
I would too, if somebody wanted to build a parking.
Yeah, exactly.
That the conform of the shared parking.
And then we struck affordable housing.
Well, now you have a hand up.
Yes.
You want to take it?
Sure.
Alright.
I'm simply asking that you raise a document, please?
Oh, raise the document.
Can you? Just for.
Stay on, stay unmuted and shout when I need to, uh.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. Um, and then procedure. Special permit. And then criteria and additional findings, SPGA must find that the proposal is not contributing the purpose of this section.
Yeah.
Do we need that? Do we need procedure, because we already say like six times.
Really?
Yeah, let's strike eleven and twelve as well.
Two, tw- twelve is something you should consider possibly keeping, sometimes purposes are. Seen by just. No, okay, that's nice, that's a nice statement of wish and intent. But if, if you want it to hold, then you should make it a criteria.
So what is that, um, nine point eight point twelve, it says you, the SPG they can go beyond what we're, but here as long as it meets the purpose. Is that?
So there, there are findings in ten point four that all special permits need to go by. But the, the authority would also have to refer back to the beginning of this section and say. Is, is it encouraging revitalization of existing building? It would have to sort of put a check mark against each of those and make sure that this proposal is not contributing any.
See, you'd advise us to keep that in.
It's something to think about.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think you need eleven.
We'll leave it in the second chunk.
I think you can kind of problematic because.
Is there anything else that is not in here that any of you had made notes that you think should be added? We're not saying anything about landscaping or buffers or, you know, like. Curious, is there anything else?
Sounds like, yeah.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to flesh the commentary out.
You want to make it easier for Kilpatrick Center, so. It's existing use to go on more easily than special.
So specify that use can exist by right?
Well, in an existing structure, the use in an existing structure.
And maybe it's generic, the current use in any of the existing structure, right?
But some of them have kind of vague uses, right? Like if it's a dormitory, you want to convert it to something else, is that a different use?
Like work or housing.
Yeah. So, but the Kilpatrick, it's like the use is pretty.
Existing use. The town knows it, knows the impacts, not going to be expanded.
It might not be a bad idea.
You don't have to rely on the sort of vested rights arguments, you can just say, yes.
Yeah.
It might not be a bad idea to have some sort of criteria that stinks. Or duration of abandonment, before the use expires, that's what I think. Could, could we run into issues where people can enable use? Through read something different.
Meaning interpret it in a, in a broad way, I suppose that's always a challenge, right? Which it, I think.
Well, that's the challenge.
It's a challenge, I mean, to the extent that we can define it. Maybe we can limit that.
Well, I mean, usually it's not, it's good or cut because the building where the pro- parcel has a use.
Right.
Well, the use is educational. Right now, the use doesn't exist except for education, so just to say that, you know, Kirkpatrick. Say that's a, the use is a theater, I mean, we all know that, but that's not what's there.
So under use regulations, do we want to think about then adding a number four that acknowledges the existing subsidiaries? Like, or what do we want to call that?
I mean, I think we'd have to enumerate what the uses are.
Which could happen, that's not unreasonable.
No, it's not unreasonable.
And maybe it's just a couple of like very distinctive buildings that get those enumerations.
They define that the uses within the buildings that currently exist. And it does. You know, by right, if they're abandoned for a period of time, so two years, then they lose that right.
Is that what Malcolm?
So what's the, what's the use, what's the use of a dormitory? Well, okay, so if people want to use it as a dormitory, yeah. But the, but, but what if somebody comes through and says, well, it's in a dormitory, it's a, it's a group housing. Or it's a, uh, but, I mean, which isn't, but that's.
Because those are two different defined use.
That'd be a lot of, a lot of kitchens.
Um, and they also can't go in and, you know. The problem I, I think is going to be with a building like this to union that has a post office, a retail, conference center. Office and residential, that building. Been a lot of different uses, but.
I think the Daniel is a.
I just think the property is so complex, if we're trying to carve out by right. Well, within that property, we're just gonna, it's a rabbit hole, actually. Cause, cause there are multiple uses on most of the, most of the parcels are.
Well, even within the building.
Again, I'm, I'm talking the buildings, but I'm not, what I suggested, this is not that we identify uses on parcels, the uses of structure.
Right, right, so what if we say something to the effect of uses that exist currently? Within existing buildings are preserved for a period of up to two years following abandonment of the educational use.
Well, I, I think the language is better, it's, it should be allowed until somebody abandons it. For a period of, well, year or two, and then it loses.
Yeah, I mean, Jonathan, I think you're being emphatic about it, but I don't know that that's true.
So why not, so why not clarify?
Right.
You have the Kellogg Music Center that sometimes has performances in public space. To go there, Daniel's Art Center for sure, but sometimes Kellogg. And, you know, it's multiple use, but it's also where students learn to play and perform together and do whatever, so educational and.
I think, maybe, maybe we clarify like, when, when the overarching educational use is, is terminated. Because that's the entity under which all these buildings are currently, right? It's, it's, it's not the Kellogg Center for Arts and Music, it's Simon's Rock with the Kellogg Center, right? So. I'm in favor of adding some sort of clarity around.
Alright, we'll try to think of what that, a couple of hands raised.
Um, did you still have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if, um, everybody can project, uh, to make sure that everybody's here.
Am I not yelling loud enough? Pedro is chronically quiet, he's very.
I'm noticing mumbling.
Thank you, in, in terms of the accessibility discussion we just had, we want to be projecting, yeah.
Yeah, so we're sitting back.
Eileen and Peter.
Okay, guys, we've got two, um, remote participants with their hands raised. Uh, Eileen?
I wanted to say the same thing, it was almost impossible to hear you on Zoom.
I apologize for that, we'll try and speak more clearly and directly.
I guess that was it.
Okay, alright, I think we've beaten this horse. Are we good to let Chris take a crack at giving us a revised draft? I think we've got some good notes, um, are, is this something that you can have for meeting on the sixth?
We'll have to, yeah.
Alright. I, I think I took good notes, so if you want to run the draft, I mean, I can.
Great.
Help communicate. Alright, great, so moving on to the next item. Uh, I'm afraid I don't have anything more on this item, but this is, um. Mobile homes and trailers discuss possible zoning amendment, including definitions of mobile homes and trailers. And the use as accessory dwelling unit, so again, for those of you who were not present at our last, um, discussion. If we were focused more on the accessory dwelling unit piece of it. And whether or not, um, it's a good idea to expand the accessory dwelling unit to include mobile homes, thank you guys for coming, we appreciate it. Speak, speak, and do not cover your mouth.
Trying to give my thoughts in. To get your, to address what we just said, I don't know that Joseph brought this to us, Joseph from the Housing Trust brought this to us. To just consider ADUs for mobile homes, I think his concern was like, nobody could. Could use a mobile home. Hey, I'll, I'll tell you, if you.
I'm sorry, what do you mean, nobody could use?
Nobody could use a mobile home as an ADU, it was his, was his, uh, I believe that's where he, why he came to us.
Or is anything else?
Eh, or is anything else, right, let me, let me start over. He, I don't believe that he came to us just to be able to use mobile homes as an ADU, I think he was interested in us lifting our. Uh, restrictions on mobile homes. Certainly to consider, to consider that. Right, to consider that. So, I'll tell you what my thoughts are on this first. I don't like, you know, I, I don't like, um, the, the fact that this is a consideration for people. In our town and in our country to live, because they, it's substantial, in my opinion, it's substantial living. And as we've discussed, it's living that doesn't necessarily make. Um, housing costs. Lower for people. We all know what a, what a mobile home and how it's built and what it looks like, and a lot of people consider it ugly. And, uh, you know, stains on the community, people worry that mobile homes in their communities will bring down property values. I understand all of that stuff and I'm sensitive to it. But I also am thinking to myself, and this is, you know, if you know me, you know that I think about this stuff, that, you know, we live. In a town and in a society, a country where the middle class has been just destroyed. People across the country and in our town are hurting. And some of them would like to have this option to be able to live. In a mobile home, because it is something that they can afford to purchase and to buy, and they, you know. If it's a last resort or if it's by choice, I'm not sure that we as a board should be. Really making that determination. Um, what I would like to see us consider is. A tidying up of our definitions of what a manufactured home means, of what a mobile home means. What a trailer home means in our bylaws. And then bringing our discussion to town meeting and see how town meeting feels about it.
How do you understand that the substandard aspect of the mobile homework hugs, rules and regs versus whether housing laws and.
Well, you know, on, on energy, on building materials, on the size of, of livable space, all of those things are reduced. So for those of you who have not been privy to this discussion, a mobile home. I'm gonna call them, I'm gonna call them mobile homes, I think that's, that's how I identify with these types of structures.
Manufactured homes, but.
I don't associate manufactured homes with mobile homes, but that's, again, this is why for me it's important to tidy up definitions. But these, these structures are not subject to the building code, they're subject to a code that's developed by. Federal Housing and Urban Development, it's a hundred years old. That's very old, well, it's been updated, and it's, but it's, it's substantial, and you know, it's, it's, it's sad and it's a shame that. This is a, a way, you know, that. And, uh, we have, that we house our people, I mean. It, it should be, you know, in my opinion, that society can provide for decent housing for everybody, it should be a human right, in fact, it's declared a human right at the, at the UN. So we in this country can't do that, so limiting the way that people can afford to live or choose to live, I, I, again, I'm not sure it's. This is the right place to do that. I'd like to see what town meeting has to say about it.
Um, I'm, I can ask you to just clarify, so I a hundred percent agree we should. Um, clean up the definitions, because it generally created a tremendous amount of confusion, I appreciate. Um, Joseph bringing that to our attention, because it was not an area I have focused on previously, but the piece. I think I generally agree with you Pedro, but I don't understand what you want to bring to town meeting for discussion, are you suggesting like a? Forum on how people feel about allowing this type of housing more broadly in the community? Or are you suggesting we, um, amend a section of the code to make this type of housing? Uh, more attainable in the community?
I would propose that we present this jointly with Joseph and the trust and. Honor his request to, to strike the section in our bylaws that limits mobile homes to sixty days of special permit. Or to extend it to special permit.
So you, you were to definitely present a bylaw.
Uh, amendments to our existing.
Which would wow.
Which might be trending in the session.
I, I, I am.
This is not about ADUs, this is really about limiting that type of structure.
That's how it came to us. But I think. He was saying, he didn't, he was only looking at this. I'm, I'm disagreeing with that, I'm not sure it's.
Yeah, let me, let's, let's go back and, um, look at those minutes, I, I don't found this.
I think that's what he did say, but I think the, the intent, like the overarching intent, I think Pedro probably did it. I think it was probably a smaller ask to eventually get to a bigger goal, but. I mean, I think you're right, that's the, the question, but that's where the ask naturally. You know. But I think if you presented this town meeting, you have to make, you, you can't just say that, oh, we're striking this, I mean, it probably needs some sort of like. This is what this means. And if you really want to have the discussion, but then if you really want to have the discussion, I'd assume town meeting is going to say no. But it might be a good place to start the house discussion.
I am reluctant to. At, at this juncture, go to town meeting with something for the purposes of just testing the waters and debating, I'd rather. Have a little bit more runway and maybe have a, a couple of like workshop type sessions and, and get people's. Input that way.
I mean, we're going to.
Yeah, it's just, so I mean, the reality of trying to like. Come forward with legislation now.
But it's not, I'm not suggesting legislation, I mean, our bylaw, it says you can do it for sixty days in case of emergency. And you can extend it sixty days with a special permit. I think what Joseph wanted to do is to strike it, to strike the sixty years, and just to allow.
I think we need to maybe have him back here and see exactly what it is and he wants to accomplish. I mean.
See if we can find the minutes from the last meeting. Where he came, I think that was in.
Oh, I mean, I don't necessarily, I don't, I don't necessarily think it's.
November.
November fourteenth.
I have a presentation.
Okay.
I mean, if your goal is to start the conversation in the town, I mean, it'd be a great way to do it.
I ju, I disagree. I totally disagree because it's, it's, we're always at the end of town meeting. If you start with five hundred people, by the time they get to zoning items, they're, they're trying to hold a forum.
But I would hope that where we, like where the discussion might happen is.
I don't mind having the discussion. I've already told you guys, I'm, I'm for it as more housing of all types for more people because there's too many people that have to commute forty-five minutes to an hour and a half to come and work in our community. Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be valuable to save that commute money and time and actually be able to be in the community you're working in, like? And, and I, I agree. But, but think of it, think of it, think how much money you spend on gas when you drive, right? You know, when, when.
Think how much money you put into our house.
I spent two hundred and fifty dollars a month commuting an hour each way. It's a lot of money, you know?
Okay, I've got what he, what he proposed. He proposed to change six point one to green as a temporary dwelling, one trailer, a different move. And to remove it, yeah, he's proposing to remove.
So, can you speak up and say that again?
He's proposing to remove section eight point six.
Yeah.
Frankly, which describes how you can use trailers, as I have previously described. That's it for those who want to remove it. Doesn't say anything specifically about ADUs, although he did bring it up.
He mentions ADUs.
I have my notes to be ADUs.
If I can finish, he mentions, I don't think it's solely the context. Well, I, he, he says rationale here that mobile homes, mobile homes could be used to create ADUs or two units on a residential lot. So again, his, his per, his point and the way I understood it, not only from his meeting here, but from my discussion with him, is that he does not feel that mobile homes should be excluded as a housing opportunity in town.
I think that's an accurate statement of what he presented.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I would not be in favor of wanting mobile homes as a principal. Okay, so you can vote no on it, have me, but I, I. I can turn one of here.
Yes, I can.
Of course, that's your right, but. This is a discussion that I think is broader. It's complicated. I mean, I mean, you know, where you're, like, if we vote no on this, we would be excluding, you know, a size of a population of people from being able to procure this type of, of a building. Which, you know, the whole town probably doesn't want, and probably thinks is a stain on their neighborhood and, and the rest of it, but you also have to look at the reality of our economic world and the system that we've been voting toward here for the last fifteen years. And the effects of it. Paul, the third pardon, main street.
Can you say your name again? I'm sorry.
Gerstberg.
Well.
So just, I just wanna quickly recap what you said. On the one hand, you're like, they're kind of substandard, but on the other hand, you're like you should allow work. How, how do you?
No, I'm not. See, here's the thing that that I get caught up in. When we discuss these kinds of things, it's as if we are allowing these things to happen. Right? Like, we have this power to prevent things from happening and from allowing these actions. But what we're deciding here is to exclude a type of dwelling which has been prevalent throughout the country for decades and decades and decades. And that people in this town are asking for. A member of our trust brought this, this issue to us, or the housing trust. And so I'm just questioning whether or not it really is up to this board to decide whether we can, we should limit or restrict this type of dwelling if somebody were to choose to live in. Or if somebody didn't have an option, another option to live in. You know, the price difference between this type of unit and something that is built from the ground up is quite substantial. Sure, right? So I don't like him either, you know, and frankly, I would probably vote against it at a time meeting, but I think this is the type of of the issue that I think town meetings decide. It's my view. So you think that we should put it up for a vote? It's to the public. And we'll have hearings here, but people can come and give us their opinions. And there'll be. Sorry?
Well, it's not if it's an elimination of the section. So I think what would have to happen is that we would have to change the use table, the definitions and propose striking eight six.
People would have to understand what the authority.
Yeah, it's a little bit wonky.
If you want it.
The pros and the cons, I mean, from.
What?
Orderability to follow the inspector.
First of all, I, 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 I disagree with you, Pedro. We're not actually making this decision to prohibit uh mobile homes. It's originally, uh, it, it already exists. Second of all, we're, we're actually elected to make this decision. And bring it to town meeting, not, not, and we'll, we'll get a public hearings on it. But I would be very likely to take anything in the town meeting that I thought wouldn't pass. Because uh it, it's, it's bad enough, it's hard enough to, to uh, you know, get through these things you tell me and that we do feel strongly about it. So I mean, and, and thirdly, I, I don't think that we should allow like mobile homes, do a lot of mobile homes, except for these ones that sort of pigs or just the same as tiny homes. Uh, we never proposed tiny homes as a basic dwelling. No, we should propose mobile homes.
It sounds like this issue needs more consideration.
Can I ask you about, why are you opposed to tiny homes?
I'm not. I voted for it.
No, the others?
I did, I'm not. I voted for it. The, the tiny home brings up a very arguing issue. I think we should have used and presented to town because the tiny home is even lower standard than maybe second number. And that was, I, I thought that was the feel of, you know, for some of the things, mobile homes is an ADU. Uh, because, you know, it is, it is perhaps a better structure than a tiny home, maybe not, it depends on how the town was built, but the uh, um, and, uh, you know, I, I'd be amenable to that because striking eight one six now on a mobile home is a principle. I, I don't feel like we should go that far in the old stuff.
I think that, that we should feel comfortable recontextualizing any part of our code, given changing environment and changing economics. So I don't, I don't agree with you about them that we shouldn't think about striking it. I agree with you, though, that, that the timing might be a little complex. You may not have the runway we need to get this to town meeting this year. But we may want to leave this as an issue for more discussion and maybe further proposal with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Just to it helps to refresh the, and some of you have this presentation that from Joe that was presented to your meeting on November fourteenth. I think it's also attached to the minutes on file. His, his discussion about deleting eight point six is he's suggesting deleting it because it's unnecessarily restrictive. Because the use table, as he points out on his slides eight, nine, eight and nine, the use table already says mobile homes special permit. It's already in there as a special permit option. And this eight, six, one, which talks about sixty days and emergencies is unnecessary. It's unnecessarily restrictive. It's already in the use table as a possibility. And eight, six is unnecessary and has.
Yeah, but it's also a timing for the special permit. And that's that's a huge point. That built you up, then people are going to play.
But the eight, six time limit is
We set it up to one year.
The eight, six time limit is as a temporary dwell.
Right, yeah, that's how I was reading that, too. I wasn't.
So it, in, in the best case, it's confusing. In worst case, it's prohibited. As a temporary dwelling, a mobile home may be permitted and used as a dwelling. So it's, so it's by right for sixty days.
Yeah.
Special permit can go to twelve months. And let me just point out and so you see that Massachusetts general law, chapter forty-eight, section three says no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit the owner or occupier of a residence which has been destroyed from placing a manufactured home. Slightly different. On the site not to exceed twelve months. So twelve months is already in forty-eight, section three. As a protected use. But this, this bylaw is saying, oh, and go past sixty days, you need a special permit, which I think is contrary to general law. Not a land use attorney, and that's just my opinion.
But do you say?
So it's confusing.
Are you thinking the use table then allows it by special permit to go beyond twelve months?
I think that it could, but I think the way I would read eight point six now is you have to re-up a special permit every twelve months. Yeah.
Okay.
So again, I, I'm just trying to refer back to what Joe actually put in front of you. You know, I don't think Pedro's characterization is inaccurate, but I think there was, there were some other reasons in what Joe was talking about.
Minutes and even in his introduction, Joe said the Affordable Housing Trust is looking at mobile homes as used for ADUs.
He goes on to say that.
Context of the discussion.
He goes on to say that removing eight, eight point six is you know, the other thing, yeah, the other thing you could do, he suggests is change the special permit granting authority to be the planning board. He's, it, it, and his point that I wrote down is the, you already allow movable tiny homes as ADUs by right. But not mobile homes. And a mobile home is built to a better standard than an RV.
And I thought that was.
The mobile, the mobile homelessness connotation is the only thing that's preventing a mobile home by right as an ADU. And he thought, and I think he identified that head on as that's, that's the problem. That's the problem.
I think uh opening that window for mobile homes as ADUs is very simple. Should consider changes.
I, I don't think it's going to result in much because as Jonathan said, nobody's going to build an eight by seventy or eight by fifty unit.
Yeah, right, mobile homes already exceed or no another.
And that's.
It doesn't exceed it, but.
Seated, but where are you going to put it?
A mobile home, eight foot wide to, to, you know, to be, you know, five hundred square feet is going to be
Why approve something?
Pretty long.
Yeah, geometrically exists, right? That's just like, it's the way that everybody shines.
I think Joe's points made some sense.
I don't think we're ready to, to move this one further. It's my sense of it.
Something to keep on the docket.
Yeah.
For discussion. Why allow RVs by right as ADUs but not mobile homes?
I, I.
That's a good point.
I guess there are good points. I just don't think we are ready to really take it further. There's too many things related to definitions and deciding what, where this type of housing would be. But I would like to get to a point where we feel comfortable making a recommendation and putting something forward at town meetings. But I don't think this town meeting.
Would be very controversial, especially.
You're probably right.
I mean, I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Kind of imagine like what this would be. Would it be like a land trust thing? And then you have, you know, basically like a land trust model.
I have no idea. I don't think we should proceed with further discussion on it at this meeting.
Because like if you were just to do this the straightforward way, like buy a plot of land, put a, a mobile home on it, like you couldn't do it in town. It's just the land cost is just too big. Like.
There's the theory and there's the reality. I just, I don't think we're, we're there yet. I think.
So I think it's more likely that like in the non-ADU thing, but that this would be some kind of like development, right? Like, like in the, like the way that we might like, might be some sort of land trust model. And the way that we wouldn't like would probably be like a traditional.
Right. I think you're pushing this well beyond where the discussion has been to get into trailer park and I.
Kind of imagine when it would actually happen, like how it's, how it's doable.
I think we need to move on to the next topic. So we'll hold on mobile homes for the time being. I think we'll take that up again for a couple of months. Um, so the other thing Chris sent us was um, oh wait, did I? Multi, multi, we've opened open, open space requirements, number seven on our agenda, review and discuss the zoning section eight, three, three, which Chris had sent to us earlier in the week. Um, for the open space requirement for multi-unit residential dwellings and whether or not it's a barrier for development. So we have a red line draft before us for multi-unit dwellings eight, three. Um did Jonathan have any edits?
Yeah. Uh, I I kind of somebody is not more basic than this. Why do we have open space requirements? Uh, when we have all of the setbacks. And.
And dimensional lot coverage.
Yeah.
Maxims already.
Yeah, and, you know, as you can see, um all the other lots. Uh, they don't it doesn't come into that issue. And when you ever run a multi-unit goings, I don't, I don't know.
Well, it, it exists now, is my point. It, it exists now. I think fifty percent is too high. You're saying it shouldn't exist at all. That's.
But we have.
Right, I don't, I don't know. Yeah, that's a good question. Wha, what function it is.
Yeah.
The dimensional requirements that set maximum coverage by buildings.
Why can't you build a deadline?
This is saying okay, but if that area of the eight point three says the area not covered by buildings also can't be covered by parking lots. That's what eight point three said.
Yeah, and wasn't that?
Eight point three says some of that area that's not covered by buildings has got to be permeable open space. That's what this is saying.
Nothing that prohibits a parking lot and a main permit.
So I, I think there was like a little bit more of a side issue here, though, Jonathan. And, and if I remember correctly, um, someone from the public also sort of reemphasized it. And that was that when you have a multi-unit dwelling, um, if there are no green spaces, there could be less opportunity for people who may find themselves needing to live in that type of housing to not have access to some sort of natural space and that, that open space should be balanced with your built environment to provide for the psychological and aesthetic benefits that you get from having a bit of green.
The flip side of that is that you can provide him with that open space, but few people will be able to live there.
Hmm.
It's a balance. It's not one or the other, right? Like, this is a case of, no, it should be a why not both. Right? So can we strike a balance? And, and that's how we got from fifty down to twenty-five. I think there was a recognition and some discussion at one of the previous meetings that.
I'm kind of doing a very basic question. Why do we need it?
Because not everyone has access to.
Or, I, I think we need it because lot coverage by itself, a lot, um, maximum lot coverage uh for a single family home uh would be maybe adequate uh to provide some buffer. But if you're building a multi um family, uh, multi uh uh building with parking that can uh eat up all of the non uh, uh, building space in the lot.
Can eat up the buffer, it eat up. Long.
All the buffer. Um, so if you're, you're building someplace that allows seventy. So if you're, you're building someplace that allows seventy-five percent lot coverage. Then, uh, um. If you're a multi-unit, uh, building with parking, then you have zero, uh, non.
It's all, the entire lot is hard.
Makes sense.
And I. Makes sense to have some open space.
I think it makes sense to have some open space and we're, but we are in this red line language giving, um. Our, ourselves has SBGA the ability to deviate from it. So if you had a lot that was right next to a park, maybe you don't need the open space. Because you've got access to open space right there. So we, we have created that provision to waive that. But I think that that does strike the balance that we want to achieve.
Is there a way that we can amend the definition of lot coverage? Estate permeability, passing. Definitions and.
Specifically structures, right?
But that's what it says. We can also add. And including non-permeable parking or something like that.
Yeah, because you could just pave it all.
I'll tell you my only. My only concern with that Pedro is I've seen a handful of locations, even here in town where permeable. Paving was initially designed, but ten years later it was paved. And so I think it's hard. It's harder with spaces that are used for vehicular purposes. To count as open space, even if it's permeable. Because at some point down the line during the regular course of maintenance. A more conventional thought process may come into play and, you know. You, you don't have to get a building permit to pave your parking lot. So there's no means of preserving the open space there.
And this.
You paved your face.
This, you know, it may, may not be something you want to take up. It may be something that deserves more discussion or input, maybe something that's. Related to open space or master planning. It, it just seems strange as written that the only exceptions were for existing buildings, but not for new buildings. So I thought that was odd.
I would say. But this will. More covered. More or less certain space. Fifty percent for now.
Well, I think it's moving in the right direction.
But this is not a hard fifty percent to a soft twenty-five percent.
So the question is, do we want to make any language changes and do we want to continue moving this one forward?
Yes, I think we should move forward.
Yes and yes, no and yes, no and yes. All right. So language as is, and we will continue to move this forward.
No and yes.
No language changes, which means you're perfect. You wrote it perfectly.
That may be the clearest statement you've made all, all night. No and yes.
Simplify. All right.
All right. So this, this, um. So, so far, just to recap, the board has kind of accepted that it wants to move forward with the, these. Potential revisions as well as the residential cluster revisions that we discussed last time. So those are things that we, we would package up and. Put out there to the, to the select board as things this board wants to consider. And you may add after the next meeting. A campus overlay district. So it might be three, three things.
Yes.
Where are we in the residential cluster?
Sort of finalized the draft last time.
Yeah, we sort of finalized.
There was going to be some part about the purpose of cluster. Because we got into the weeds really discussing.
And, and there was.
And I just didn't see that.
Okay, so let's make sure everybody's got the latest draft there.
And also. I guess we can amend it in fact, but I had suggested this previously. We're taking away the bird. We have existing birds in town. And we have to deal with those.
Okay, yeah.
And so what I would suggest is language. This is planned use residential development per projects that have been previously approved. May be modified provided that all of those changes are in compliance with the requirements of eight point five of the zoning law. Very simple.
Yep.
But that way. Yeah, and al- and also if, you know, if. Have that ever saw the light and, and wanted to build more houses, they can, they can do it.
Okay, thanks. That, the, the cluster is not on this agenda. I was just bringing it up as a point of where we were in the zoning amendment process. Overall, so I won't get into details.
Yep.
We'll send the final language. So you'll be able to see it at the next meeting.
Okay.
And then, and then kind of finalize it. Yeah, but you can also add it at the public hearing stage, which would be in, in March.
Okay.
But in order to finalize something, get it reasonably tight to send to the select board. Next meeting is your deadline.
Your goal to get things to select board was their meeting of what date?
I don't know exactly their date, but when you leave.
On the.
February sixth.
Yeah.
That night, you should be relatively. More or less content with the drafts that you're gonna advertise for public hearing.
Okay.
I mean, intending to have some.
That's for you to decide at your next meeting. Seems like you're moving that way.
Okay.
And you'll, you'll, based on your discussion tonight, there'll, there'll be a. A, a final, final draft.
Draft, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Next is board and subcommittee updates, issues and concerns. Jackie. Jonathan.
All of the, many of the projects. That, um, federal funding, um, are nervous. Uh, yesterday, the, uh, federal highway department shut down the website, said all projects that are in process have to be. Delayed. Um, today they reversed that, opened up their website, but, uh. There's, there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of, um, funding, in terms of what's going to take and, uh. What's actually going to be allowed to, uh, finish and what's, what's going to be interrupted. And that, well, yeah, that's another. But this is, uh, this is actually federal money that's already been, uh, uh. Approved and, and, yeah, uh, but, uh, there's exactly the order yesterday, uh, um, stopping all. Uh, projects of certain fines and, and. Count on too much.
I think that's fair point. Thank you. Um, citizen Steve, anybody have comments, yes ma'am?
I, uh, you know, just, just listening to the science. Um, and I apologize if I don't, but it's that with me and. The idea of having hazardous waste. But then. On a site, um, on that campus, this is. And it should be one of those exclusions, not something that is, um, wow.
I don't, I don't usually reply because this is your opportunity to comment, but I just want to say one thing and. Claudia may be able to give you some opinion as well, but, um. There is a provision in the federal code for what are called small quantity hazardous waste generators. And there are lots of things that might surprise you that fall into that category. Um, sometimes, um, uh, the glazes that are used for pottery. Um, have heavy metals in them and they are considered hazardous waste because of the quantity of heavy metal. So. I think we have to be considered. We certainly don't want to see hazardous waste dumped there, but.
Or combustion.
Or combustion. Yeah, we're not burning houses. We, we don't want to produce a pollutant, but we just want to be. Considered and informed as to what the uses are and understand that. We might occasionally be surprised where we find waste streams. Uh, but I agree with you, like an overarching principle that we don't want to approve something that is going to contribute detrimentally to the environment there.
So could you consider a way of writing that? That sort of excludes these large, like so, I do get what you're saying, but. Couldn't we just exclude the really large sort of, like we don't want to have what's going on in Lennox.
A- and as Claudia mentioned earlier, the water quality protection overly district has a lo- long list and. We'll be cross referencing it just to see that, you know, all the items there are not contrary to the things we were hoping to promote. With the redevelopment of those buildings.
Wanted to make sure that we were thinking of closing loopholes.
Yes. Yeah, no, that's a valid point. Absolutely.
A large font, large font, um, are prohibited under the.
It's a federal standard. Yeah.
It's made small to populate to a large. And B, I want to stress my point again. The two thousand ten, how we raise everything, looking at a bit of review to make in, when you describe that more. Add it to the zoning bylaw to the water quality protection overlay district section, section nine and two point eight. Except, exceptions are prohibited uses. And then it says very clearly it's A, except for. Very small quality generators. And then it allows for hazardous waste combustion facility. Period. And like I said, the town spent a lot of money and time putting that provision in the by, bylaw for a reason. But furthermore, the town has spent a lot of money and time persecuting me because of my property. Because I'm trying to stop the hazardous waste combustion facility from coming into Great Barrier Bay. Period. And unfortunately, I'm going to interrupt you ma'am. I'm pretty sure that they may depend on one. And I also have a question because this is my citizen speak time.
Yes.
Didn't either somebody say that their, the next meeting was going to be via Zoom?
Yes.
Why?
There's, we have to have a meeting on a specific night, but there's no meeting room available. So there's no physical space. We have to do it virtually.
Well, I'm going to ask two things. I'm going to ask that maybe you adjust that scheduling, A, and B. A lot of times when you have only by Zoom, I'm not able to get on. Not because of lack of my intelligence and or B, ninety percent of the meeting is muffled. So if you're going to insist on having this meeting Zoom, which I am absolutely adamantly against. Make sure that it's clear. Because there's no way when you're at a Zoom meeting and it's all muffled. Get through the M D of you to say, hey, that's why. So I'm going to ask you, Mr. Remble, with all the hatch you're wearing at this point, specifically being the interim town manager. To re, to reschedule that meeting. So it's, it's not Zoom. I want to advise that. I want to go to come here and I want to go here, pay attention and listen. I've got a lot into all of this and a lot into my life, like a lot into it, a real lot.
I understand.
All of you put together. So thanks.
I understand. I understand. We decided at the previous meeting that we needed to have this meeting moved up one week. To February sixth, and that is what the board has agreed to. And I apologize for any inconvenience. We'll try and make sure you get the minutes if you can't get on the Zoom link, but. Um, that's the decision that we made at the last. That's fine. That's fine.
I want to be allowed. It's my right.
You are allowed. Yes, ma'am. You are allowed.
So I have another question. If you don't mind, what other meetings are being held that night where it can't be?
I don't, I don't know offhand. I'm sorry, Claudia. I checked the meeting room schedule. If the meeting room schedule has changed, if somebody else. Has, has canceled a, a meeting and there's a room available, then it's possible to do hybrid. We can do hybrid. A- as it was when I last checked, it didn't look like it was possible and it would have to be Zoom moment. But I'll check.
Uh, yes.
Personally, I just want to say thank you for being so thoughtful about the overlay district implementation of power and consideration into it. It means a lot that. You know, there's a lot of people invested in kind of the potential future. And so like, and it's a lot to see that you guys are taking great care and. Being really thoughtful about it. And I'm sure you probably don't get clanked a lot. So I want to say first of all, thank you. Um, and then, and then second of all, you know, I think, I think the environmental impact that everybody's talking about is obviously there. Um, i- an issue that, that is of great concern for, for the group and I think for the broader community. And so I'd ask if. As you're going through this bylaw creation to consider, um, you know, I, I know that there's a federal regulation about, um. Specific small amounts of, of. Uh, hazardous waste, but considering one of the restrictions to be against a, a combustion, whatever that the combustion thing is. The combustion generator, thank you.
Facility.
Facility.
As a hazardous waste combustion, so. By right, industrial land in Great Barrier.
Generator combustion facility. Um, if, yeah, if you guys could just consider that and, uh, continue to bring thoughts into that, um, I know it would be appreciated. And again, third of course, I'm thankful.
Sir, um, anybody online? Um, Eileen?
Yeah. I'm just curious about the, the, uh, remote only. Because there are no meetings listed on the calendar at this point.
I'm going to say the same thing.
For the thirteenth.
So well, we will check and to the extent we can meet as we normally do, we will.
We prefer.
Um, but the, um. At the, at the last meeting, at that point in time, we thought we could only do it by Zoom. So we will check and it will be posted as is required.
I think she mentioned that, I mean, she's looking at it. Actually, it was a thirteen.
No, but it's on this, on the calendar.
It's on the sixth.
Well, the meeting will be posted. We'll do the best we can to meet in person.
Usually there, if there's going to be a meeting, it's usually. Posted, it's often posted in advance and that was my point and there are. Available.
Oh, we will check and we will let you guys know. Absolutely. Thank you. Any other comment? All right. Then the meeting's adjourned at eight twenty-seven. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.